Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. I am Commissioner-in-Chair Rick Vest. To my left is Commissioner-in-Vice Chair Deb Shore. To her left, Commissioner Sean Flowerday. To my right is Commissioner Roma Amundson, and to her right, Commissioner Krista Yocum. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin the meeting.
The Copying the Rest Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available with electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. The agenda, I want to amend this, approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021.
Move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion, please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are claims, approval of law claims processed through November 9th, 2021. This needs to be amended to include payroll ending on November 3rd, 2021.
I move to approve the claims processed through November 9th, including payroll dated through November 3rd.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims as amended. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number three, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of right-of-way contracts with the following. Stephen Senior and Jackie L. Amos, Southwest 15th Street and West Calvert Street, an amount of $682. Gabriel H. Kelly, Southwest 15th Street and West Calvert Street, an amount of $442. Jerry Benish, North Florida Street and Davy Road, an amount of $962. Marvin Mueller, Family Farms, Inc., North 162nd Street and Holdridge Street, an amount of $962. Mark Hutchings and C.C.J. Scholes, Northwest 126th Street and West Mill Road, an amount of $564. Change order number six to county contract C-21-378 with Pavers, Inc. for adding an additional site with various patching locations. Amendments to the following county contracts. C-19-317 with Vigilant America LLC for electronic offender monitoring services. C-18-695 with Graybar Electric for annual supply personal alarm transmitter. C-21-235 with the Board of Regents of University of Nebraska on behalf of the University of Nebraska Lincoln Center on Children, Families, and Law and Nebraska Children and Families Foundation to act as a dispersing agent for a rent and utility assistance program for families and individuals during the pandemic. C-17-826 with Fastenal for annual supply power and hand tools. C-17-828 with Two Fast Supply Company for annual supply power and hand tools. C-17-829 with Total Tools Supply, Inc. for annual supply power and hand tools. Utility number 2168 allowing Northern Natural Gas to evaluate and maintain existing gas line due to anomaly. Work will be taking place roughly 1,297 feet west of South 190th Street on Sagecoach Road at no cost to the county. Set in public hearing on Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m., in room 112 of the county city building regarding county comprehensive plan amendment 21002 to adopt the Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan. 2021 Annual Inventory of County Personal Property. Receive and place and file the following reports for October 2021. County Clerk for District Court Assessor Registered Deeds and Records and Information Management.
I will move approval of the consent items. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is new business. Four A is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and Lancaster County engineer toward a contract for asphaltic joint sealant to Maxwell Products in a total amount of $60,000.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This is for the crack sealant that we use in-house to seal cracks on pavement.
Move approval?
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4A. Any discussion, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a resolution to provide for road maintenance at certain county roads located within the preserve at Cross Creek, 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th additions.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. What I have set on the overhead is a map of the preserve at Cross Creek, 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th additions. The preserve at Cross Creek is located on Roker Road in between South 54th Street and South 68th Street. My department is bringing it forward for a recommendation of maintenance by the county. As I always state when bringing these forward, we truly have no funding allocated to take on these roads, and we know that the money allocated to my department nowhere near covers the maintenance for these roads. Nevertheless, per the requirements, I'm bringing this forward for maintenance.
I'll move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve item B. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four C is a resolution, a matter of authorizing the county board chair or vice chair to sign a task order agreeing with JEO Consulting Group, Inc. for preliminary design services.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This is a resolution to allow the board chair or vice chair to sign the agreement that is associated with the following item, item D, on the agenda. It is for intersection improvements at the circled intersection on the exhibit I have placed on the overhead at 148th and Holdridge. This is a safety project to be completed with HISP funds, and I would note that this is for the scoping services for this project only, and so you'll see additional agreements as we go forward.
Move approval?
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is an on-call professional services task order agreement with JEO Consulting Group, Inc. for preliminary design services in the amount of $15,387.70.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This is for environmental services associated with the future intersection improvements at 148th and Holdridge.
I'll move approval. Second?
Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is a resolution, a matter of authorizing the county board chair or vice chair to sign a task order agreeing with Felsberg Holton Milavig, Inc. for NEPA services.
Move approval?
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve item E. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is an on-call professional services task order agreeing with Felsberg Holton Milavig for NEPA services in the amount of $11,134.67.
Move approval? Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve item F. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four G is a contract with Midwest Services and Sales Company to provide annual supply grater blades.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This is a contract to replace the wearing surface blades that we put on our motor graders. We put two blades on each motor grater, and we replace those as needed throughout the year.
Move approval?
Second?
Motion and a second to approve this contract. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four H is a contract with Matt Talbot Kitchen and Outreach for Transitional Housing Program for Community Correction Participants. Costs shall not exceed $50,000 per contract year.
Good morning, Kim Etherington, Lancaster County Community Corrections. This is a contract renewal for our young adult reentry program. These dollars are in my approved budget for the year. Move approval?
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve. Thank you for being here. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. I is an interlocal agreement with Educational Service Unit Number 18 for educational services to youth detained at the Youth Services Center.
Move approval?
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve item I. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is an Greenwood Seago Marco Advisors to provide consulting services to Lancaster County regarding the annual investment and administrative review of the county's 401A retirement plan and 457B deferred compensation program.
Move approval? Second?
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion, please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is a grant contract with Nebraska Community's Playhouse to promote its grand opening.
Yeah, move approval? Second?
Motion and a second to approve this grant contract. Any discussion? No one's here on this topic. Very good. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number five is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on the agenda, we do so at this time.
Very good. We'll open public comment.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. Today, I wanted to bring it to the attention of the commissioners that on Friday afternoon, I closed Bridge E38, which is just south of the Village of Melcom. The closing of this bridge makes it difficult for them to get to their new ball fields, as well as their wastewater treatment plant. We did construct this bridge in 1954. Here's a picture of it. I have been alerting local people and as well as the village of Melcom that this bridge could have to be closed suddenly without notice since the flood of 2015. We have been in discussions with the Village of Melcom, and we're going to have to modify our snow plan so that they can get to their wastewater treatment plant through the long way. And then I'm just going to show one picture of the back wall. This bridge was closed because of loss of material behind the abutment. On Friday afternoon, we did discover that there was a void behind this abutment, and we believe the void to be significant. We have currently closed the bridge, and we are trying to figure out what our next steps are. Of course, with the age of the bridge, the best solution is probably to close or to replace the bridge. Even if we do determine that we could repair this bridge by digging it up and putting sheet pile behind the abutments, we're convinced that that would cost more than 50% of the replacement cost of the bridge, and it's probably not a good decision. However, we are going to look at that for the benefit of the community. I have put the back wall up on the screen. I did hide the inappropriate graffiti with a sticky note. Everyone thinks the engineer doesn't have a sense of humor, but it turns out I do.
Okay, yeah, Roma?
What is the width of this?
Public comment. You know, we're not to public comment. It's not public hearing. So, we've been told that creates another agenda item if we interact with those making public comments. So, therefore, I'd just offer that reminder that when public comment is being offered, the commissioners are not allowed to interact at the request of our legal counsel.
Thank you.
Anyone else here at this time wishing to speak on an item relating to county business that is not on the agenda? Anyone else? All right, we will close public comment.
Next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Tuesday, November 9th, 2021, immediately following the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting in room 112 of the county city building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a staff meeting on Thursday, November 11th, 2021, due to the observance of Veterans Day. The following meetings will be held on Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, in room 112 of the county city building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting at 9:00 a.m. Lancaster County Board of Com... Excuse me. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners' special meeting to vote on County Tax Amendment 2000... Excuse me, 21009, immediately following the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. Lancaster County Equalization immediately following the special meeting. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will attend a public information open house meeting on Thursday, November 18th, 2021, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Lincoln East High School. County Commissioners can reach you at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners' meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube. Next is number seven. This is public hearing for Tax Amendment 21009 to amend section 13-051 of the Lancaster County zoning regulations related to solar energy conversion systems. And before we begin, I wanted to let you know we had two emails in support of the text amendment. One was from Michael Hayman, and the other was from Dustin and Jenny Simpson.
Okay, thank you, Dan. How many people do we have registered to speak?
Looks like 15.
15, okay. Very good. Just for... So, everybody's on the same page here. This public hearing will be conducted related to the text amendment listed. The order of testimony is staff proponents or applicants is probably the better term, those in support of the text amendment, those in opposition to the text amendment, and then those who are testifying in neutral capacity related to this specific text amendment. Given the numbers, and we go back and forth on this, but I think the numbers allow us to have five minutes of testimony. I'm going to ask everyone to be respectful of that time. The commissioners will be listening very carefully, trying to take in the points you're making, and we have a lot of folks who want to be heard this morning, so I would ask you that you'll get a one-minute warning and then the five-minute mark, and I'd ask you to wrap up at that time. The exception to that is the applicant is not bound to a five-minute limit, and staff is obviously. At any point, commissioners have the right to ask questions of anyone testifying. You can agree to answer those questions if you want to. Anything else that I've missed before we begin? No. All right, thank you. And, oh, you will be sworn in, so when you come up, Dan will swear you in before you give testimony. We'll start with staff.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Steve Hendrickson, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Previously, gave you a briefing to go over the details of this application. Just a reminder that the Planning Commission and the planning staff both voted unanimously in recommendation of denial. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Can you just give us, if you don't mind, Steve, and I know we'll get more information as we go forward, but just a brief summary of what the text amendment was attempting to do?
Sure. So, basically, it is an amendment to the Solar Energy Conversion System text amendment of the county. The county had just recently adopted this text a little over a year ago. This would substantially change the text. It would add much more restrictive condition in terms of electrical substations when they are next to a CUP. It was going to be requiring that there be a fire protection plan that is approved as a part of this, as well as an environmental study. No details were given on the specifics of what that environmental study would be done, but it'd be done by a third party. It also went into much more extensive requirements in terms of the landscaping screening and requirements for maintenance of that screen. And then the final, most substantial item is that it changed the setback for non-participating properties, whether they had a dwelling or not have a dwelling, from 100 feet to a non-participating property with a dwelling to 500 feet, and from 50 feet for a property that did not have a dwelling to 500 feet as well. And so, we thought with all of these items that they did not specifically address the land use impacts. They went far beyond any potential impact that you would see with a solar panel, even a very large solar panel facility, and for those reasons, we had recommended against it, as did the Planning Commission after having a public hearing.
And the Planning Commission voted on this unanimously?
Yes, and they voted unanimously five to zero, October 13th, to recommend denial.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Steve before we proceed on? Thank you, my friend. We appreciate your time here, and you'll be available at the end if we have questions.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. All right, if the applicant would come for... Or their representative, I guess, in this case.
May I remove this to speak?
Yes, yes. And when you are speaking, please feel free to remove your mask.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good morning, commissioners. My name is David Bargain. I'm a partner at Rembold Ludkey Law Firm at 1128 Lincoln Mall here in Lincoln, Nebraska. My practice area is primarily governmental law, including land use regulation. I represent today Mick Von Bush and several other Lancaster County landowners who are proposing this text amendment before you today. The purpose of the text amendment is to address specific concerns that my clients have now that the county has fundamentally altered community unit plans in the county with text amendment number 21005. My clients were encouraged by Mr. Vest on the county board to present a text amendment of their own that addresses their concerns, and so they have done so in this text amendment number 21009. This amendment addresses five items. One, noise limits of solar facility electrical substations located within a CUP. Two, fire protection in and around solar facilities. Three, environmental impacts from solar facilities. Four, enhanced screening and maintenance of screening. And five, increased setbacks. I will explain the rationale of each, but first, I want to highlight what the Planning Commission's unanimous vote in this case meant. Excuse me. Based on comments at the vote of the Planning Commission on this amendment, it is clear that the consensus was that the county needs to study the issues we raise in this text amendment before approving projects. In fact, Commissioner Campbell stated that a recommendation of denial by the Planning Commission is also a recommendation to the county board that the board should have some of these areas studied before they approve any of the other things. That was his statement in the meeting. My clients agree. On noise limits, the proposed noise limits in this amendment within a CUP are based on the most recent study of noise associated with annoyance and its impact on health concerns by the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. That was conducted, of course, in conjunction with wind tower facilities. The staff report from January of this year on text amendment 20008 stated, quote, "The scientific research and papers reviewed by the LLC HD indicate that participating property owners report much less annoyance relative to non-participating property owners that are exposed to wind turbine noise. Annoyance is the primary health concern related to wind turbine noise, as this sensation can lead to sleep deprivation, stress, and potentially other negative health consequences." In addition, LLC HD's review of the most recent scientific research on wind turbine noise and health continues to validate that the current noise level limits of 37 dB at night and 40 dB during the day for non-participating property owners is protective of the health of those who choose not to participate in the project. This annoyance basis is the reason for the proposed text amendment on noise for solar projects, matches that recommended for wind towers, and is limited to projects located in CUPs. Comparing CUPs under county zoning regulations and the city of Lincoln's zoning regulations, the city's regulations elaborate that uses on outlots and CUPs should be protected from building and that they should prohibit any activities that would unreasonably disturb the residents of the community unit plan or the surrounding neighborhoods. Thus, the idea of a CUP anticipates additional protections from activities that would unreasonably disturb residents of a CUP, similar to LLC HD's findings of annoyance by non-participating property owners for wind turbine noise. And so, the same scientifically researched noise limits are proposed in this amendment. Excuse me. Regarding fire protection, the text amendment proposes requiring an applicant to obtain a fire protection plan from fire departments and districts with jurisdiction over the facility. You will hear and see evidence today of the unique challenges that large-scale solar facilities can present for firefighting, especially grass fires and wildfires around them. The concern is not so much that solar facilities will start fires. I think there's been a misconception throughout this process that there's a concern that these things will start fires. That's not the primary concern of this amendment. It is that they make fires harder to fight. It's 3,000 acres of solar panels, or nearly that. It's very difficult to fight fires in and around a facility like that unless they're designed appropriately. Other jurisdictions, such as the state of California, have adopted standards that address all of these. overgrown vegetation, protective gear for firefighters, access to solar facilities for firefighting equipment, readily available ways for firefighters to shut down facilities prior to fighting a fire, and other items. On environmental impacts, the text amendment proposes requiring an applicant to obtain an environmental impact study approved by the county. Other sections of the county zoning regulations address environmental impacts from structures, notably Article 10 on wireless communication facilities, which is very comprehensive for cell phone towers. Lancaster County Regulations 10.009b1 requires an applicant to, quote, "provide copies of any environmental documents required by any federal agency." Section 10.010a4 requires the Planning Commission to consider, quote, "adverse impacts such as the visual, environmental, or noise impacts." Section 10.010a10 requires the Planning Commission to consider, quote, "impact on natural resources, open spaces, recreational trails, and other recreational resources." All of these requirements can be addressed by an environmental impact study, including drainage concerns, impact to wildlife, et cetera, which is why the text amendment proposes it, particularly for a facility that may cover hundreds of acres or thousands of acres and involve changes to topography and other natural features. Regarding screening, the text amendment proposes enhanced screening requirements and a method to ensure its maintenance. This is to address visual impact and property value concerns, especially for nearby and adjacent landowners. By comparison, the county's regulations for wireless communication towers mentions concerns with visual impact at least 10 times in Article 10. So discussion about visual impact is not important, is not relevant. That's not true, because our regulations currently mention that as a concern 10 times for cell phone towers. My clients believe that additional screening is a minimal and easy-to-comply with regulation that addresses those concerns. On the increased setbacks, the text amendment proposes increased setbacks. This is for the purpose of fire protection, as well as to address visual impact and encroachment on incompatible uses. Again, comparing to the county's comprehensive regulations for wireless communication towers in Article 10, which are three times as long as the regulations for solar facilities, visual impact and incompatible use concerns are more heavily addressed with a single wireless communication tower than with a sprawling, thousands-of-acre solar facility. The increased setbacks are intended to address those concerns. To the extent changing the setbacks in Article 13 would conflict with other provisions of the zoning code, we would ask that those other provisions be made to harmonize with this change. We asked this board to approve the adoption of text amendment number two one zero zero nine, and I asked that all the materials submitted by the proponents of this amendment be made part of the record of this proceeding, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Bargain? I have just a couple. You mentioned changes in the screening requirements or expectations through the text amendment from what we currently have.
Correct.
Can you just give me a update on what those differences are?
Essentially, it doubles the requirement of trees and requires that there be a fund set aside or a way set aside to maintain those trees. What happens sometimes in other facilities that we've researched is that sometimes that screening gets put in, doesn't get maintained, it dies, and it's just not, it's all for naught. And so we are encouraging the adoption of more screening and additional protections for the screening once it's put in place, so in case it's not maintained, there's a way for the county to enforce that.
Okay. And then the second question I had was setbacks. These setbacks you're proposing are county-wide and not specific to CUPs. Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
It would amend the portion of the setbacks in Article 13, and so the section, section 13.051a6 would increase it from 100 feet to 500 feet for any non-participating property with a dwelling. That's correct.
That would be every dwelling in the county, then?
Correct. And to the extent that this would conflict with any other provisions in the county's zoning regulations, we would ask that those other provisions be made to harmonize with this provision.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bargain. Any, that's all I have.
Just one question, and I don't know if you can answer this, but let's say the project's this big, and if we go from 100 to 500 on non-participating property owners, it becomes half the size, it becomes two-thirds the size? How would that change in setbacks alter the size of the project?
That, I don't know that. In particular, this amendment is dealing with not a particular project, but just as a generic change to the text of the regulations. And so as any particular project would be proposed, it could have impacts very widely. I just don't know.
And I just want to clarify something else that, in your previous discussion, you are not suggesting at this time that we change every place in the code that says 100 feet to 500 feet?
For purposes of this amendment.
This amendment only?
For solar facilities.
But I heard that anywhere there's a conflict, we would change that conflict to match this.
But I just, so you're saying we should change it for confined animal feeding operations? We should change it for wind farms?
No, no. This amendment deals only with large solar facilities, and so to the extent that a solar facility is proposed, the setback would be 500 feet. And if there's any other provision that deals with solar facilities throughout the code that has a different setback, I apologize, I'll clarify that. That's what we ask would be made to harmonize with this.
Right. Very good. Mr. Bargain, then, as the applicant, my understanding is you have a right to come back at the end.
I would appreciate some rebuttal time if that's.
If you so desire, so.
Okay.
If you want to remain, sir, you will have a second opportunity.
Thank you.
All right. We'll begin our testimony of those who are in support of text amendment, of this text amendment.
Andrew Poole. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name's Andrew Poole. Address is 4700 Mattie Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I am a resident of a CUP. We, we have these, naturally, you guys all know the history behind this, and the one thing I will say is I do appreciate the concession that was made initially with a 300-foot setback. When we're proposing this text amendment or as we testify in support of it, there's a couple of things that I always like to point out in some of the arguments that we've heard against it, and that is that a lot of people will come up and say that this is designed to stop the project. It's not really designed to stop the project. What this is designed to do is to protect those of us that are there now. I grew up in a world where, you know, if we got a dog, the common courtesy was for us to put up a fence to keep the dog out of the neighbor's lawns and not require the neighbors to put up the fence in order to keep my dog out of their lawns. That's part of what we're looking to do, is we just want to live in harmony with this project. We want to be able to say, in order to do this, we want to do it the right way. So in some of the provisions and some of the things that we look at, we would really like to petition the county to not only continue to study these things, but review how the best path to do this is. One of the examples that I'd like to show, this is, this is an example, and I'll take it with a grain of salt as far as what the website says is the location of it, but this is, it happens to be a parking structure where the solar panels are put over parking lots. This is a fantastic opportunity to create non-productive land and move it to productive land. This, the project that has been proposed, and not necessarily relating to this text amendment, takes productive land and takes it out of service. But, you know, I look at a project similar to this or a study similar to this, and if we had the ability to say, let's put this over education institution parking lots. I did a quick search, and according to Google Maps, Google Maps says there's approximately 20 acres of parking lot at Southeast Community College alone. And the thing about that is, it's all flat. They can use all that property. The benefit comes back to the rent, back to the education institution, the students and faculty get covered parking, and it's a positive way for us to engage in this. Here's another example of what another school district did in order to do this. I think of the bus barns that are around. I believe Waverly has a bus barn that's, that takes up approximately an acre. The school itself has about four acres of parking lot on it. Again, just a perfect example of how we could do this and harmonize this within the community. But speaking more to the actual text amendment and the reasons why we looked to this is, within the setbacks in particular, or as a starting point, when I'm thinking about the setbacks, you guys all gave us an opportunity to have the setback further on our CUP properties, but there's a lot of our properties, mine not in particular, but several of these properties have a non-CUP lot that's across away from them. So you have a road, there are residents in the CUP outlots over here, but not over here. Some of these people are going to have the solar panels 150 feet away from their front door. Where on the backside, they have 200 feet of backyard and then a 300-foot setback, they have 500 feet from their backyard. We're looking to try and get that as close to as possible to equalize those two provisions. You know, why do we do it on one side, but we're going to leave them hanging on the other side? My passion, quite frankly, is we will have it in our backyard. It's going to be in an outlot that, when I get my morning coffee in the morning, I'm going to look out the window, and I'm going to see a field of solar panels, and I apologize for that. The screening is really an important thing for me personally. The current code says that they have to put four trees for 100 feet. This on my property is four trees spread out over 60 feet. And we'll see, once this pops up here, we'll see how four trees over 60 feet looks in this particular example. These trees happen to measure approximately 14 feet tall. They're going to put in eight-foot-tall trees, is what the code says, and so we can imagine how four trees over 100 feet will look. Here's another example of six trees over 90 feet. The screening, we're asking for better screening, because quite frankly, six trees over 90 feet, you're, the code says we're taking two of these trees out and adding an extra five feet to this measurement. This is not sufficient. You know, we're asking for eight trees. Coming back to this picture, I'd actually make the argument that we could probably say one tree for every 10 feet would be more appropriate. We aren't asking for enough when it comes to the screening provision. You know, this is standing right across the street, and I can see right through that. So this is a quick final point. When I've researched this out on how I'm going to screen this out, I'm looking at trees that are going to cost me about $4,000 in order to screen out that property line to create an actual screening. We're putting that burden back onto us as the homeowners, and we're not allowing that burden to go to the constructor of the project, or a future project as it may be, so.
Questions for Mr. Poole? Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Next is Tom Chautka.
Yeah, it's me.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I have some, Karen Skinner was not able to be here today, and so she had put some thoughts together, and I would like to share those thoughts with you. I have her permission to do this, and then I've got some thoughts that I would like to add to that. So she goes, "I just wanted to let you know some of what I planned to say. I wanted to remind the county commissioners that they work for me, that I help pay their salary, and they are my voice. We are an extension of their family as they represent me and all of Lancaster County. I thought the job that I had helped elect you into office was to keep the safety and welfare of the people and ag lands first and foremost as your primary concern, to make good, sound decisions for each of us who had the faith and trust in our county commissioners. My neighbor and I were, my husband, I'm sorry, we were told in May that the solar industry would be viewed from our homes." Polite words. As we know, the truth is that we will be forced to live and around these solar panels, not just view them. We reached out to our elected commissioners to inform them about the solar energy. Sounds preposterous. We felt it was our job to educate each of you when all the research should have been done by all of you, to make sure that this was in the best interests of our county and for our people. On meeting with Deb Shore, we wanted to let her know everything about solar panels. We had researched how it contaminates soil, what the solar panels were made from, and where they come from. 96% come from China and so much more. She stated in that meeting that if we sent her an email with an attachment, that she would delete them and not be able to speak, and she was not able to speak for her fellow commissioners, but felt that they did probably the same. Incredible to hear that. Commissioner Shore stated that they have so many projects to vote on that they cannot possibly read each attachment sent. Wow, this is almost 3,000 acres, not just a small portion of land, and affects so many lives, and this is how the commissioners make the decisions for the people they represent. How in the world can you make informed, become informed if you do not read the expert articles? How can we convey the facts? How does this prove our findings? And I can tell you right now that this was something that happened to me in a totally another different situation, where I sent some information in to have review to a person that makes policy and decisions that affects a lot of lives. And I was told that if I sent a link for them, because I wasn't making the information up, that if I just sent the link in for them to bring it up and to look at the information, that they would simply delete it. And I thought, how do you do that? If you are not willing to do the research yourself, how can you make policy or disregard the time that we take to do our own research? Okay? I'll go back to her statements here. She stated at that time that she wanted personal stories. Also, when it was proposed to basically grandfather the outlots exempted in the solar industry, she had listed to all our testimony and was going to go on vacation when the commissioners placed their votes. My husband reached out to the powers-to-be to postpone the vote so that I would be present and have representation from all the commissioners. This did not happen, and we lost. Not sure, but we do know that each time Ranger Power has asked proponents for postponements, excuse me, it was granted. I want to remind them again that they work for me. Same meeting, Commissioner Flowerday, and I hope I can keep this all straight, but came without invitation, but came. The other commissioners we had invited could not attend that day. Commissioner Flowerday stated that, as he sat at the table, that the one thing, he says, "I can tell you is that I'm thinking for the next 30 or 40 years, not just for today." When you look up his words for wanting to be elected, he states that "I work hard for the people." Does that not include me or just the people in our district? An invitation was given to Commissioner Flowerday to come out and see firsthand where the industry would be placed in and around us. At first, he said yes, but then he never made it. Is this how you work hard for the hard-working people? Kristi Yocum, you voted no to the Costco risky chicken farms, as it was thought that it would pollute our land and our water. You stated at the last hearing, though, that you felt landowners should be able to do whatever they wanted with their own land. We have educated you all to the facts and figures, but since you do not work in my district, does this not include me? No fire plan in place? Commissioner Yocum, your husband, John, was a fire chief in Alliance and McCook. I would think that you would be aware and be a champion for environmental issues, and the same article stated that you are decisive vote in bringing more solar to Lancaster County. Your words were, "My vision is, is for common sense for working families, not for wealthy special interests." Is that a minute?
That is your time, sir.
That is my time.
Yeah. Could you give me your last name again, please?
It's Houtke, C-H-O-U-T-K-A.
H-O-U-T-K-A, because I do try to write everyone's name.
Can I make just one more comment real quick?
Quick.
On February 25th to 29th.
Not about a commissioner, but about the issue before us. I would appreciate that, Mr. Chautka.
Okay. Well, having our voice heard, I think, is the issue.
Very good. And we do, and that's why we are having the public hearing today, and we are the elected representatives. I would just offer one comment, sir, you know. On issues like this, we hear from a wide array of folks and that represent a number of different perspectives on any given issue, and we do represent Mr. and Mrs. Skinner. We also represent all the other people, and sometimes their views on these issues are not going to line up in agreement, and that puts us in a position of making these decisions.
This is something that if tomorrow a decision is made that it's wrong, you just don't undo it.
Appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
Ron DeBog.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. My name is Rhonda Bopp. I live at 1855 North 173rd. I'm going to echo a few things that were just said, but I come before you today to testify and have the record show that solar farms in our CUP and ag land is irresponsible and will cause harm to the people behind me in this room that you represent. I believe we have shown and will continue to show and provide evidence of this fact. The problem is, the staff is operating against us to advance the party agenda. Ms. Yocum? Thank you. We were told early in this process as a meeting that you all received too many emails and to read and investigate the articles yourselves. How does that represent your voters if you don't come to your own conclusions and are just listening to the staff? Commissioner Best, we did elect you to advocate for us. My husband and I and our 180 neighbors put our trust in you. We are asking you to hear us and represent us and not the party agenda. Ms. Yocum, you did vote no on the Sunset Chicken Barns, stating that they would pollute the land and water. You are a supporter of solar farms that would be taking away our enriched ag land that feeds the world. We feed the world. There is also an aquifer under that land proposed for the solar project. You also stated again that the landowners have their rights to do whatever they want with their land. By supporting the solar farms, you're taking away my right, the right that was promised me when we bought our land and built our home. Where is our win for the people? Mr. Flowerday, you've been seen in Gage County, sitting beside Mr. Levy, testifying for the wind power project that he represents. That seems like a conflict of interest. It definitely seems like you have a bias toward Power Ranger. I would almost ask that you recuse yourself from this vote. It is obvious and very disappointing that the city staff tries to push the party agenda at every turn, working diligently with Power Ranger and ignoring their own citizens. This is an egregious act against us as citizens. I would implore you to listen to us, the people that were elected, that elected you and that you represent, take the existing cups off the table and move forward with this text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. And ma'am, I did miss your last name as I-
Bopp. B-O-P-P.
B-O-P-P. And it was Rhonda?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Bopp. Appreciate it.
Next is Jim Bopp. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Jim Bopp. I live at 1855 North 173rd Street. I've been a professional firefighter since 1982, started in the military, and I'm currently in the municipal firefighting field for the past 30-some years. I'm here to testify specifically about the fire protection plan that we've listed here. When you're talking about a major power production facility, especially next to homes, which will be proposed, it could be as close as 140 feet from my front door. A fire protection plan is critical. They use them in other places such as Australia, where they get 11% of their power from solar, but they recognize the importance of studying each plot of land specifically, because obviously you can't just rope them all into one. There's topography issues, there's issues with, you know, access. Every piece of land's different. A large solar protection facility drastically changes the environment that's built in, much like our representative said earlier. It's not that solar panels are going to ignite into flames. What happens is they change that environment, you know. They are a heat island, they'll dry the grasses out, and therefore, if they're not cared for correctly or planted correctly with the right kind of grasses, as dictated by a fire protection plan, that can add to the fuel load. If there's not correct access, i.e. gates, those kinds of things, roads that will stand the weight of a water tanker, room between all the panels so that you can get grass rigs up and down, do the things you need to do to make an effective fire attack, that's a huge problem. The other issue that we are going to find out, obviously, is rural fire protection. These are volunteers, and God bless them, they do a great job, and they know what they're doing. I've talked with Scott, my assistant chief at Eagle World Fire, he has grave concerns about this also, if it's not done correctly. And please understand, we are all about renewable energy. We care so much, we want it done right. We want it done right, and, you know, selfishly, I want to protect my home. So part of this you have to understand is if it's too close, and we don't have the right grasses planted, we don't have them cared for properly, if the screening kind of gets kind of half-dead. Fires start, most of the time, grass fires, if you're not aware, around the Midwest is accidental, right? Farmer's out there doing work on his four-wheeler, someone's out there hunting their Cadillac converter, whatever, starts the grass. It's a windy day, it's been a dry season, and it takes off. You may not be aware, but in 2018, there was a major grass fire across three states. All the experts say it's due to global warming, it's going to get worse. In three weeks' time, it burned up 2 million acres in Kansas, Oklahoma, and Texas, okay? Everybody thinks that wildland fires are kind of a California problem. It's coming here. It's here already. So to help with that, what we're asking is a fire protection plan that would look at that individually for each project, and would recognize the dangers and what needed to be done in that area to help prevent that, give them the access they need. Understand, they're going to have a delayed response because they're all volunteers. So we could easily, on a windy day, take off and without the right buffer, i.e. the 500-foot setback that we're talking about. That provides a head start. And it's not always direct flame contact, you have to notice that, too, when you look into this, and I don't mean to talk above your heads, but you have conduction, convection, and radiation. That radiated heat can easily start siding on fire. That's part of the problem, if it's too close. That's why you see in places like California, when they do weed abatement regulations, it's not based on noxious weeds. It's based on the fact that you don't want that fuel load too close, so the radiated heat and then direct contact from embers gets that home going, or your deck going, or whatever it might be. So here, again, it's a very important point to say to you that it's not that the panels themselves are going to start the fire. They change that environment up, what they're doing. It becomes a heat island, it'll dry the grass out if it's not the right grass. Gets too tall, we don't take care of it, you add it to the fuel load, now you add delayed response because it's volunteers, you don't take care of it right, and the setback is not far enough, it's a definite danger. And that's recognized across the world, which is why they do these fire protection plans. So I ask that you please approve this amendment.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bopp? Thank you for being here, sir.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yep. My name is Mike Benz, 1741 North 173rd Street. Today, I'm mostly going to focus on the sound levels. So just real quick, so the 2040 Plan, one of its paragraphs there, paragraph 1.4, says "The 2040 Plan describes a community that values natural and human resources, supports advances in technology, and encourages development that improves the health and quality of life of all citizens." Specifically, I want to call out "improves the health and quality of life of all citizens." The City of Lincoln Municipal Code recognizes that sound is a major health concern, and adverse levels can degrade that. With that, so from a noise level perspective, getting into it, wind energy systems, you know, they have a lower level, and they are much further back than what the solar system is proposed. With that, so how decibels work? For every 10 decibels, it is a tenfold increase in intensity perceived as twice as loud. On average, I check fairly regularly in the morning, when it's nice and quiet, I'm 30 to 35 decibels. The proposed level during the day is a 10-minute average of 60, so it could be louder, it could be lower, 10-minute average. So what that is, 30 to 60, that's eight times louder than my nice calm mornings that I moved out to the country for. To kind of put in perspective, I've got some various pictures here.
It takes a second.
All right, so if you can see right here, that is my lawnmower. That is a 25-horsepower Cub Cadet riding lawnmower. I am 42 yards away, and I was sitting just above 60 decibels. Here is another angle of how sound carries out in the country versus in town. Here's my lawnmower. I am 60 yard, over 60 yards away, I think it was like 62, and I was still above 60 decibels, just right around there. Here is one, you can't really even see my lawnmower, but it is right here. I'm over 100 yards away, and I just got below 50, right around 50. Anything after that, it pretty much stayed right at 50 decibels. So with that, too, as stated many times by proponents for solars, they're quiet, they don't make any noise. So why do we have to allow a higher level? If they don't make any noise, put your money where your mouth is. Back it up. Allow the lower sound level. Can you hand that to somebody? This is part of a demonstration.
Might as well be me, Dan. Just so you're, do we have a method for recording this for the clerk's office? Sorry, I lose my voice.
Yeah, what, I mean, I'm not sure where we're headed here.
Okay.
You have one minute remaining.
Is that at 60? So that sound is the sound of power inverters within a solar field. One solar field that I looked at, actually multiple, they have those inverters about 600 feet apart throughout the whole field. So it's not just one power inverter within the field, it's multiple. That sound is going to be compacting, and that sound will carry much further. And if that got up to 60, that's the sound that I have to live with. That is not going to improve the quality of my life.
I would just note that when I was sitting here with the silence, it went to 44. It didn't go below that. Give us one minute. 34, for whatever that's worth, I mean, given what we have here to work with. All right, Mr. Benz, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Benz concerning the sound levels?
Here's, yep, and there's a bunch of other materials in here of miscellaneous requirements needed for other special points.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Ed Benz, Lincoln, Nebraska, 524 Sellside Drive. I'm not a landowner out there. I looked at some land with my wife and that, number one, to be at a country setting. I've been out in the country since 1978 by Seward, when we chose to move into Lincoln. My son, previous here, we wanted to kind of go out and move out there. I kind of missed the countryside and that. With this amendment, I looked at all the other hearings with testimony, and when other counties were looked at with the solar stuff, there was one county that looked at 500-foot setback. I asked you to, asked all yourselves, why did they do that from the 300-foot? And it's, my opinion only, I forget where it was, is basically, they give a little more freedom, let the people, whatever for reason, close to town, have that setback for a buffer space. The gentleman before that showed the pictures of the trees, I used to live south of Staples. I had five acres, and I planted a whole bunch of trees from out there at Halsey National Park, and I knew how long those trees took. I also planted extra trees, so I could get a tree spade in and move if something died. A gentleman from Seward, Nebraska, that I hired to do that would not move one of my beautiful blue spruce trees because it had a robin's nest in. So I'm just saying, you know, I had everything planned out, spacing. The picture really shows what spacing you need to put in for trees for, you know, acoustics. That's why you have this up in your ceiling. If you had a straight wall or a drywall, our sound would be bouncing up in that. I live in Les Lincoln, north of Burlington Northern Railroad, and I enjoy my windows open at night. What I get to hear for a noise is when Burlington Northern pulls their engines out, and after they put a new turbocharger on, that hum is noise pollution. So with my son's decimal meter and that, I know one of the very first meetings I came to, I'm an RV camper, I like my peace and quiet, and I bought a new generator this year. And that Cummins zoning generator had a decimal reading, it was one of the lowest other than Honda's, based at 60 foot. If I had it, I'm assuming 60 foot's a little bit back in the other room, but if it was set for 53 under no load and 58 under a full load, that would drive you guys nuts. You got to think of respect to your other campers, you also got to respect the people in the neighborhood. The last meeting, the solar company said, you know, their door is all the way open. I heard the comment about all the acres, that there were some acre, if they don't use all the ground, what are they going to do with that? I would suggest you, board, to look at this 500-foot setback. I'm in favor of this amendment. Let's let them, if they don't use all that, then let's let them put that around all the CVPs, increase it by 1 or 2% to give us much buffer and noise distance away from all the people out there. Because I would love to live out there in the country like they do. I lived out there in Seward County for a number of years. I don't know if it's feasible now, the age I am, but I strongly think you have a chance to do something right. And while I say this-
One minute.
-there's a lot of us, that I'm 65 years old, and I'm still learning in life. Are you smarter now than you were at age 20? I still have a son that I wish would say, Dad, you weren't so, you know, you were right. And it's not Mike, it's his brother. But I ask you guys to really look at this situation. I don't know if you've ever lived out in the country. I heard a windmill, water windmill squeaking a mile and a half away from my residence, and it was just a beautiful sound that you could hear. Livestock, you know, it's something. This ground, they can work, they said we're going to be, we can be a good neighbor, and by the board here adjusting that setback and adding more trees, that's a good neighbor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Benz. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Tracy Larson, 1300 North 182nd Court, Lincoln. Good morning. I am one of the residents that is less than one mile away. And like so many other people back here, we just bought this property four years ago. It took us 10 years to get it, and I know I've shared my story with you numerous times, been trying to make it through without tearing up. So I'm going to read a couple of things I really want to stress on. One is a correction that I think is so important, and if people are doing their job, I think Tom from the City Planning Commission, whatever his title is, he would have corrected them, but it was mentioned at one of our meetings that only 12 homes are affected, and somebody up there, I don't know if it was the county or the planning, but they said only 12 homes. And is that right, Tom? Nobody corrected him. I sat back there, I thought, you kidding me? And I said, thank gosh- I sat back there, I thought, you kidding me? And I said, thank gosh, Karen Skinner, who's not here today, she did the math. She said it took her about a couple hours to do the math. She said it's a hundred and eighty homes. A hundred and eighty people are affected by this. That is a small village in rural Nebraska. I don't even know how big Paxton or Bruel is, Bruel, but it's probably about a hundred and eighty people. A hundred and eighty people are affected with this, within a mile radius. But twelve? The other thing is the size of the project. It's three thousand acres, and I don't know about you, but I grew up with a dad who's ninety-seven today, and he tells me, bread to my head is, one square mile is six hundred and forty acres. And I thought, Dad, big deal. Who cares? It is a big deal. Six hundred and forty acres. So that is about, when you do the math, it's about four point seven square miles, so let's round it up to five square miles. I know it's hard to comprehend from a hundred and eightieth to a hundred and twelfth to a hundred and ninetieth when you live in town, because I've lived in both sides of the spectrum, but think of Twenty-seventh and O, everybody knows where that's at, right? And Eighty-fourth and O, that's five miles. Now, take Eighty-fourth and O and go all the way out to the huge American flag, which is the Phillips Station on Highway Six, and about Fletcher. That's about another five miles. Now, go from there over to about Twenty-seventh and Superior. Take Superior. That is the five-mile area we're talking about. That is three thousand acres approximately. So can you imagine the thinking that that requires, that if you're dealing with that kind of a project, you cannot just delete the email, you cannot delete the attachment, because this affects so many people? Can you imagine that that city, from Twenty-seventh to Eighty-fourth, what are you guys going to think about? You're going to put on a million different hats. I know in my job, I've got about five different hats. I have to think of the client, the customer, the member. I've got to think of the person paying the premiums. I have to think of everybody's situation, and I'm sure you guys are doing the same thing, right? So traffic flow in that huge five-mile area from Twenty-seventh to Eighty-fourth out to Highway Six, water drainage, fire trucks, how are they going to get around that, children playing, all homes that are backed up to that project, they're all destroyed, they're all mowed down, that counts all the trees. That doesn't even count all the wildlife that's in that section. All the business is gone. You totally wiped them out because you're putting up these solar panels in that projected area. Wouldn't you give a project of this magnitude a little bit extra attention? How many of you have Googled anything or picked up a book and read on these solar panels? I, I, I just can't even imagine that you wouldn't. Decommissioning, this is another thing. You are giving the gift to your children and grandchildren, all right. You're giving a wonderful gift to your children, your future children, your grandchildren, in twenty years from now, you're saying twenty, thirty years from now, you're going to have this wonderful solar panel. Look what we did. Look what we did today on this county commission. Look what we voted on. We voted to change Lancaster County, pretty much, to make us look like a third world country with all these panels. And somebody's saying today that in twenty years, these panels were going to last. No, I'm hearing that maybe it's only fifteen. Fifteen, some of the panels are already starting to disintegrate. So I love to give gifts that get better with time, and they are worth something in twenty years. Nobody explains in detail where these panels go in twenty to thirty years. Now I'm reading some don't even make it to fifteen. Attorney Levy said, we are only talking about a four-foot panel, not a wind turbine, so it's no big deal, right? Four-foot panel to decommission and to put somewhere. He forgot to mention, do you know how many panels, four-foot panels, are in this one square acre? Has anybody did the math? There's a Google out there that says it. There's one million eight hundred and fifty-eight, five hundred and sixty thousand panels in one square acre. We're talking five square miles, right? So take it times five. Nine million two hundred and ninety-two, eight hundred panels could be in this project, but they're only four-foot big, right? They're no big deal. Don't you think, and I says, I don't know about you guys, but I got to plan ahead in my life to get rid of a twelve-inch latex paint can. I got to plan ahead, when am I going to put it out in the sun? When am I going to put the cat litter in it? I can't, I can't do that with these, but they're only four-foot big, right? They're no big deal. We've got ten million. Can I talk a little bit longer, please?
Ma'am, we've been holding you every five minutes, so...
But I have to mention, I said, the water supply is, again, is underneath its ground and is so precious, you can't mess with Mother Nature. No one's going to win. I don't know about you, but when a tornado comes, you're not going to win. You just got to survive.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sarah Grasser? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Sarah Gracer, seven-six-four-one Aylesworth Avenue. I am not a landowner, but my parents live out there, and they waited their whole entire lives to move out there, and I know none of you live out there. So I really hope that you guys are listening carefully to everyone speaking behind me because they truly care about the land. And this is three thousand acres worth. You can't undo it. Whether they last fifteen years, thirty years, forty years, it's all over the board, and I think that you guys have an opportunity to make the right decision here. One thing I wanted to mention, about fifteen, twenty years ago, they were going to put the city dump out in this area, and the county board voted no because of the Dakota Aquifer. Although the Dakota Aquifer is a secondary aquifer, it's one of the largest secondary aquifers in Nebraska. And currently, there's thirty-four hundred private wells on the Dakota Aquifer, and I have a picture here to show you. All those black dots? All those black dots are private wells for these people, and even up north, more north and southeast as well. So that project right now is in eastern Lancaster County. Those are their private wells that they're tapping into. If you do a quick Google search, and you literally, this is from December fourteenth of twenty twenty, do solar panels pollute groundwater? Studies have shown that heavy metals and solar panels, namely lead and cadmium or silicon, that's what Ranger Powers, assuming or saying that their panels are made out of, can leach out of the cells and get into groundwater as well as affect plants. These metals also have a record for detrimental effects on human health. We have lots of salt in the Lincoln, in the Salt Creek Water Basin here in Lincoln, which is the groundwater from my understanding. Does saltwater damage solar panels? Yes, solar panels are sensitive to saltwater because salt can corrode solar panel components, leading them to malfunction or stop functioning altogether. I'm sure that's going to be part of this study once everything gets passed. So I don't know why we're not talking about that right now. If you guys pass this or these special permits, I understand the amendment today is for the five-hundred setback, which I support, but the grand scope of the projects, of solar projects here in Nebraska and Lancaster County, by approving this and these special projects, you all are leaving the door wide open for the solar developers to come in and take more land. The amount of land used up versus the energy produced is far less than optimal. Last year, we had twelve feet of snow and below freezing temps for two weeks. Snow will not just slide off solar panels. They will freeze, and they will not produce any energy. From their Journal Star article, what, several weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, the power is going to go to the Google and Microsoft data centers or Facebook data centers. It's not going to these people. It's not going to my house over on Eighty-fourth and Holdridge. It's not going to go to any of yours either, or the condominium. With all due respect, I know you live in a condominium. You don't have the appreciation for country life, and I don't have the appreciation for a condominium life. However, I would never put a solar panel next to your house or a solar farm next to your condominium because I know that you wouldn't like to look out at that. Do as to others as you would have done to yourself. Lastly, I would like to note that I tried to get ahold of the mayor, and she didn't, she did not have time to meet. I've sent in several emails to you guys and planning commissioners, no one responded back. If you don't read them, I understand you have lots of projects going on, but this is a really big project, and you're affecting the land for years to come. I did talk to a senior policy advisor to the mayor, and she is heading the Lincoln Resiliency and Lincoln Action Plan. Last meeting, Attorney David Letty mentioned the Lincoln Resiliency Plan and Lincoln Action Plan, and said how the solar projects coincide or meet the goals and initiatives of that plan. No, it does not. I talked to the senior policy advisor, and she said, no, I would not choose to put solar panels or solar farms on three, thirty-six hundred acres. She disagreed. So I really hope that you guys are talking internally and not just looking at the big money side or the political side or the tax incentive side, because you cannot undo this. It is not going to be easy. I want to buy land out this way. I won't now. I plan to stay in Lancaster County. The other folks, Forest Solar, I'd like to see if they're here in forty to fifty years, to see if they're still in Nebraska. With that, that's all I have, and I really hope that you guys make the right decision for these people, not me, but for them. Thank you.
Good. Any questions, commissioners? Thank you, ma'am.
Can we get a copy of your?
Sure.
Terry Cruz?
Try it again, Dan.
Looks like Terry Cruz.
Terry Cruz? Okay, perhaps they had to step out. Let's move forward.
Mick Von Bush? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Mick Von Bush. I live at sixteen thirty-three North Hundred Seventy-third Street. It's about Hundred Seventy-third and Holdridge. Good morning. Everybody's covered a lot of what I want to talk about. One of the things I want to talk about was the denial recommendation from the planning department. They state that we have no justification for our requests. I think the health, safety, and well-being of my neighborhood, my home, my children, is justification enough. I did have Commissioner Best, he was nice enough to come out and travel around with me and view how everything was going to fit. I do appreciate that. The only problem with that is it was all done after the voting was done. So back to, I think we just need to take a minute, take a breath, step back, and get educated on this. We're Nebraska. We're not a big solar place. We're not Utah. We're not Arizona and California. We have next to nothing for regulations. We have no experience. That's not a fault. That's not being dumb. It's not being stupid. It's uneducated. There's a big difference. We need to educate ourselves. That's where the fire protection plan comes in. Your planning department says we don't need one. Hell, I needed a fire protection plan on my home. It's called smoke detectors because fires happen. I mean, we have more regulations on building a couple hundred thousand dollar home than we do a two hundred and fifty million dollar solar project that affects a hundred and eighty homes. You need to know the size of my footings, the depth of my footings, the width, the width of the wall, how many outlets I'm going to have in my house needed to be known. I just think it's irresponsible, and it's major negligence on the planning department's side of just saying, no, we don't need one. We most definitely do. The environmental impact of this, do we know? That's the question. Do we know? The runoff part of this, do we know? The decommissioning, do we know? Do we know, do we have a breakdown of the chemicals in these panels provided by the manufacturer of the panel? Do we have a mechanical breakdown of the inverters from the manufacturers of the inverters, showing what components are in them, how they operate, the decimal levels that they operate? All of this has been said, oh, we'll deal with it in the special permit process. We'll deal with it then. We'll deal with it then. No, that is the wrong time to deal with it. This needs to be done first. I guarantee you, when they built Binnacle, they knew where the ductwork was going. They knew where the chases were for the wiring. They knew how many connections were in that building. We know nothing on this. And yeah, the unknown is scary, because we're not taking the time to get rid of the unknown and make it known. That's pretty much it. I mean, if I don't know if the fire department can save my home, if there's grass fire that spreads, why would I want to live there? If I don't know if there's anything in these panels that'll leach into my well and pollute my water and make me sick, why would I want to live there? The fact of the matter is, we all live there now. They're coming in after the fact. They should provide all this information. They should assure us with facts and figures on paper provided by someone other than their lawyer written up, that this is what it is. I wish all of you would have come out and been with Commissioner Best and taken that tour, because I fully believe he learned a lot. Fact of the matter is, you all should have learned a lot before you voted on setbacks last time. Now is the time to correct it. We can correct it right now. We should correct it for the sake of everybody in this room and the other, like, hundred and sixty homeowners that aren't here being represented. That's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Josh Buell?
My wife is actually going to speak first because she's got to go. She's right after me.
I swear you both in.
Yeah, that's okay.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Haley Buell, thirty-three hundred North Hundred Fifty-Fifth Street. All right, I don't have as much to say since most of it has been covered, but just a couple notes. The reason that the planning commission denied our request for this text amendment was because the last time when we had the CUPs come up, they had voted unanimously for us to not have solar panels on our outlots, and you guys did not listen to them. And they felt that you didn't listen to them last time that they were not going to approve it again, feeling that you guys weren't listening to them again this time. That's why they denied it this time, was their words. So our request is, your job as commissioners is to look out for us as the residents that are being directly affected. We didn't have a choice. We, nobody came to us ahead of time years ago, hey, we're thinking about these solar panels that are going to affect you and your whole livelihood. It was after the fact, it was behind our backs, that we find out that a product has been worked on for a year or two, and we get four months to try to fight for our homes and our families. And this is unacceptable. So you can redeem yourself by protecting us as the residents that are being surrounded. Our house, I don't know if you have a picture, but we are surrounded on all, basically, four sides. We're trapped. We have two roads to our house. We're completely surrounded by solar panels. We have eight kids. This is not good for our family. There are no benefits to us. In fact, all we are doing is reaping consequences. Our home, so we are here, all of this is solar panels, and this across the street. So we have one road here and one road here. Our home, which is our biggest asset, will be diminished. It's naive to think that it won't. I'm tired of hearing people say, oh, it's not going to affect your house value. In fact, my husband is a professional realtor. He's been in the business for twenty years, as well as his parents, and he knows real estate. It will affect our house values. The fire risk, which we've all talked about, we cannot assume there's not going to be a fire. And when I have eight kids that I'm trying to protect and get out of my house when there's a house fire, we at least deserve a plan to know that we're going to be protected. The constant humming. We live out on an acreage for the peace, for the nature, for the beauty of it. We don't live out there to hear a constant humming. One thing that hasn't been talked about is the change in ground temperature. If you do your research, many articles show that it can change the ground temperature twenty to forty degrees. And I'm sorry, when it's already eighty or ninety degrees out, how are we going to be outside when the ground temperature is even hotter? So I'm asking and supporting the setbacks because I need more protection for my family and my kids. Right now, the setbacks are not enough. A hundred feet, three hundred feet is not enough. I'm, I'm okay with five hundred. Obviously, you know I would want more, but we are asking for more protection over us that didn't have a choice in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, I've already been sworn in, so... My name is Josh Buell, thirty-three hundred North Hundred Fifty-Fifth Street. I hope you guys can see, and don't take things personally as it might feel an attack on you guys, but if you guys can think from our perspective, this is an attack on our, our whole entire lives that we have in our homes, okay? When we talk about fire, you look at this property right here. This is mine, and, and we will be surrounded. So adding a couple hundred... So, adding a couple hundred feet for setbacks to protect my family a little bit more, I think all of you would do the exact same thing or would want that, and we should expect that. Here's a couple of things when we talk about fires. Do you know that according to the National Fire Data Center, there is no information regarding solar farms or solar fires because there's no category for them to store that? So, if you go look this information up, you won't find it because they store it as other. There's no way, just in case everybody can see, there is no way that the data is missing there for us. So, when they say, "Oh, we have no risks on fire" or anything like that, that's because the data is missing because they're not categorizing that. I brought up, I brought up a ton of articles the last time before the planning commission that just here alone, I want to say, a bird started in California over 1,200 acres of fire because it touched two wires, okay? When we talk about this, this is in California where they have fire protection plans and we don't even have one. I'm going to show you a little video really quickly just to show you guys. This is a solar facility. Let me actually... That video right there is actually DC power going down there. That's starting. If that grass was actually dead right now, all of that would be in flames when it comes to it. This is coming from a solar farm. I'm showing you video to prove that they can cause fires, but you guys aren't going to be living around it. We are going to be living around it, okay? There's article after article in regards to the fires. I want to tell you, last time when we came before, they had, the planning department had one of the assistant chiefs from Lincoln Fire and Rescue to come. I respect them. I have friends and family that I've actually sold houses to. They're my friends that are a part of the firefighters. That chief assistant came. He has no jurisdiction over any of this stuff. It's all rural. They've had how many years to bring the actual people that who are going to be doing this to here, and they haven't done that. That chief actually didn't even review the map when it comes to it. We're talking about 3,000 acres. All this stuff in red, 3,000 acres, they didn't even view the map. Why is that? Because Ranger Power didn't even show them the map. Nobody knows, nobody can even search for it. We had to replicate what they did on here. This is 3,000 acres, okay? One other thing, when we talk about impact study, guess what? Ranger Power, they have been a part of an impact study that they are the ones who actually wanted to set this back for 1,400 acre solar facilities. They were willing to do an impact study for two years on this. Why is that? Because this is something that is going to affect 3,000 acres of ours. The setbacks are also to protect our family from the noise, from the fire risk, which I don't think is far enough. When we're talking about residential, if you guys were going to live around this and you saw that fire, I actually showed article after article regarding other solar facilities. Tesla suing Walmart, Amazon suing Tesla as well because their solar panels caught fire. We're talking about this is going to be close to ground. Those were on buildings that they actually could put out. This is actually on grass that we're talking about that will start, and there's wooded area. What I want to say also is that, Krista, you were one of, a mother to me as I grew up. Your husband obviously was a firefighter. I remember Dottie, all of this stuff. I have great memories with you. But I know that it hurt my heart last time to hear that you were willing to put this 100 feet from my house when we don't have a fire plane and your husband was a firefighter. I love your family. I have great memories. I know that when you guys go camping and stuff and we've gone camping and canoeing, you would not want this around those. We're talking about my wetlands area from my property. Let me put this one more time. There's a wetlands area behind my property. We're talking about putting it 50 feet from a wetlands area. You wouldn't put that around any other campground when it comes to that. What I want to tell you, one last thing was when we talk about green, we talk about, "Look at the mining that they have to do in order to get the batteries for the solar that we end up doing." Here's another thing. This is so green that we're tearing up other people's, other countries to get the cobalt, lithium, and all this other stuff out. We're not even taking in some of these things into consideration. I want to point out one more thing on this because when we talk about China, this is my last thing.
One more thing, Mr. Bulow.
When we talk about China, China has a lot of the polysilicon that they end up using in theirs. In China, we talk about, they're actually doing concentration camps for people to make these solar panels to bring them here. We haven't even talked about this stuff yet, but I'm telling you, this is from 1011news.com when this just came this year. And this is something that our government has to end up thinking about. These are the people that we're dealing with.
Thank you, Mr. Bulow.
Thank you.
Appreciate your being here this morning.
Do you guys have any questions? I please would ask if you do. Yes, I'll give you...
We're going to have to make sure that the record is maintained here.
Yep.
All right. Any questions, commissioners, for Mr. Bulow? I'm seeing none, sir. Thank you for being here, Josh.
Okay, that was the last one for persons that had signed in in support.
Now, we had one name where the person didn't respond. Let's try them again, Dan, just in case they had momentarily stepped in.
Terry Crews?
Okay, evidently.
Are you Terry Crews?
What's your name, sir?
Matt Franson. I didn't get signed in.
Oh, okay. And how do you, which, where do you want to testify, Matt?
I'm for the amendment.
For the amendment, yeah. Then, why don't you come forward and sign in?
After he's done, can we do a five-minute break?
That sounds good, Sean. Absolutely. You'll need to sign in and then be sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Hello. Good morning. I'm Matt Franson, 4721 Matty Street. I live in a CUP at 185th and Havlock. I'd like to thank everyone this morning for your time. And first of all, I'd like to say that I'm not against this project. I don't think most of us are. It just comes across that way. And more importantly, I'm not against green energy. We do need to do something with, within that. But it just needs to be done in the right way that we can work together so that we're not all upset and our lives ain't changed and we don't have all the burden on us. We need to come up with a fair and reasonable way to move this project forward while protecting the residential dwellings that were there first. I'd like you to put yourselves in our shoes, put yourself, look at it from our perspective. You purchased a lot. You built your home. You've invested in your home, wells, septic, trees, landscaping, outbuildings. This is where you call home for your family. Then someone comes in and changes the rules that you signed up for and agreed upon without thinking about the effects and consequences. These will affect things like property values, horrible noise because of lack of regulation to better, to use better equipment and create greater setbacks. The open field to become eight-foot-tall shiny chain-linked fences with barbed wire on top of them with industrial solar field to be on them. Fire safety becomes an issue, runoff from erosion, screening issues due to lack of regulations. All these problems today can be resolved with setbacks. Every one of them. Just give us some space. We deserve it. You know, the applicant brings up land rights. Well, the applicant's argument is unacceptable. The applicant argues that landowners have the rights and they should be able to do with what they want to with their ground. It's not true. That's why we have codes. That's why we have zoning regulations. The counterargument to that from non-participating adjacent landowners, especially in CUPs, is that the landowners created CUPs and they sold us their ground. They used their rights as landowners, people. By that, that created restrictions for their remaining outlots, okay? That was their choice, not ours. The open spaces should remain green spaces and stay. Our outlot is approximately 60 acres and valued at $10,000 an acre. That would be worth $600,000. Our homes that are surrounded by that outlot, our four homes in our property, our land, because we are landowners, is worth $2.4 million. Are we really protecting the right ground here? Where's our rights? Where's our protection? It's not enough, 100 feet? I mean, Rick, you came out, which we appreciate greatly, you proposed 450 feet because you saw that 300 feet of football field wasn't enough. And for the people that aren't in CUPs, 100 feet, 33-yard line? I'm even confident the Huskers can score when they get to the 33-foot, or 33-yard line.
Had to bring that in.
Come on. I mean, you guys, you could take care of most of these problems, all of them almost, if you'd just give us 400 to 500 feet setbacks. I wouldn't be here if there weren't the outlots, to be honest, but now because you guys changed the outlots, we need noise requirements, setbacks, screening, fire safety regulations to protect us. It is because you're placing the solar, because of the solar placement around our existing homes that we must add additional regulations that are more stringent than any other place in the state. 90% of the issues you guys got with this project going forward are within 10% of the ground. Our outlots are about 300 to 400 acres on 3,000 acres. Just find another half section of ground and let's work on this together, give everybody setbacks. But I hope that you guys will please accept our amendment or work together to modify our amendment so that you will accept it, work together so that we can move this project forward. My main concerns are setbacks, noise pollution, and the view of industrial space around our homes. Please consider our text amendment and consider moving these solar permits, removing these solar permits from our outlots. At a minimum, please consider special conditions that allow everyone, non-participating property wise, with a dwelling to be 450 to 500 foot.
All right, sir. Thank you. Any questions for Matt? Sir, thank you. Let's just double-check here. Anyone else to testify in support of the amendment? We have a gentleman over here who's raising his hand. Are you signed up, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Come on up. Come on up. You're here.
Sorry for the delay. I wanted to see what everybody else was covering, so...
We're fine.
Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir. My name's Stuart Hoff. I live at 8019 Leo Lane in Lincoln, Nebraska. I am hired as a manager for a farm that is east of Lincoln. My concern here is on one particular item of this project. I'm not opposed to solar by any means. I'm concerned about the area of ground we're covering out here. This started as 1,000 acres inside the city of Lincoln. It takes four acres to produce 1 megawatt of power with solar. From my understanding is the company ran into some difficulties with the area grounds they have since we have ruling topography here in this part of the state. It wasn't flat like they probably saw on Google Earth, so they got out here, decided they had to expand it because they needed 270 megawatts of power to make this probably, to be cost-justifiable to install it. So, now we're out to 3,000 acres. With the topography we have in this area, we're putting in basically 1,000 acres of infrastructure that is solid surface. Will not take rain, infiltrate into the water or into the soil underneath those panels. It's going to concentrate the water flow. It's going to make the water flow, create rills, or have access roads into those places, hopefully big enough for fire trucks and firefighting rigs, which Lincoln Fire Department does not have. And the other units do have some, but not enough to cover this big of an area. That's another subject. Well, my concern is, Ms. Dingman, are you ready for this, for this much area to be covered with impenetrable water? And it's going to come into our county ditches and affect our county roads and our bridges, which you just talked about, the Malcolm one? And a lot of box culverts I know in that area that are, that are not in very good shape. We have one bridge right beside the area that I manage, and it's a small 10-ton bridge or box culvert, or it used to be a bridge. I know that tributary is going to be very effective in the Kent Creek area. Are you ready for this much area to be having water invasion when we get these two- or three-inch rains? This is going to affect your budget more than anything else, barring setbacks or anything else. Are you ready for this? I mean, honestly, we're covering a lot of ground. I mean, these panels are spread over several sections. They'll be concentrated in concentrated areas, but all these water flows are going to end up in these little tributaries with Kent Creek and Stevens Creek, tributaries to Salt Creek. Are we ready for this? I think there needs to be an environmental impact study just on the erosion and water runoff alone to protect our budgets for the county. That's kind of what I want to say. And I want one thing to realize. This is a project in Texas by a company here in Nebraska putting in. That's 100 acres right there being put in of solar panels. That's been cleared off, and that's how they install them. The land is cleared off, not leveled necessarily. Understand that the most solar panels can only operate no more than 6% slow, which puts it on mostly on the south-facing side of the hills. Here's another picture of them installing. Look at the ground. They were doing this during a wet season in northern Texas. This is a 4,200-acre facility, contiguous acres. It's all together in one spot, not spread out across everything. They're using 7,000 miles of wire to connect all this on contiguous ground. I kind of did a rough calculation. It's going to be more like 10,000 miles of wire to hook all this up for our area. So, we got a lot of infrastructure that's going to go into this, into this facility. So, I really am concerned about our water erosion, our soil, and everything else in the area. That's, that's my angle on this. I'm not opposed to it. I just think it's got to be looked at a little closer from those points. All right. Any questions?
Uh, yeah. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Can I get...
Sure. You can have all this if you'd like. Okay, that's fine. You might be better off just taking the whole thing. So, thank you.
All right. With that, we will end support testimony and we will take a 10-minute break before we proceed. before we proceed.
I do. Commissioners, good morning. David Levy, Baird Home Law Firm, 625 South 14th Street. We represent many utility-scale solar developers active throughout the state of Nebraska. I want to first bring this back and frame this a little bit. This is a county-wide, proposed countywide text amendment. This is not, from a legal matter anyway, a referendum on any particular project. This would affect every square foot, every acre of land in Lancaster County. To that end, in 2020, about 15, 16 months ago, Lancaster County adopted some of the most stringent solar regulations in the state of Nebraska. We work in counties across the state, and I can tell you from comparing those, these are probably the most stringent regulations in Nebraska. I was here for that process. There was public hearings, there was notice, there was opportunity for public input at that time. This proposal now, coming relative to a particular project, would be more restrictive or as restrictive as anywhere in the Midwest. It would show that Lancaster County is not open for the business of solar energy. To that end, you have received letters from the Lincoln Lancaster County, or I guess Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, in support of renewable energy and in opposition to this text amendment. As I stand here before you today, you have over 200 people up the street at the Cornhusker Hotel at the Nebraska Wind and Solar Conference. The vast majority of those people are there because they're interested in seeing the growth of wind and solar energy, renewable energy, in Nebraska. Yesterday, you had the CEOs of the three largest utilities in the state of Nebraska speaking to that group favorably about solar energy. This proposal also would significantly infringe on the property rights of all of the people who have voluntarily put their land into this project. Private renewable energy developers in the state do not have eminent domain authority. The only way that anybody has a renewable energy project of any scale in the state or literally of any scale is if landowners voluntarily put their property into that project. You've heard today from a small group of people who have fair and legitimate rights to bring their grievances to their elected representatives, absolutely. But I'd ask you to remember that this is a countywide matter. 15, 16 months ago, this board adopted some of the most stringent regulations on solar energy in the state of Nebraska, if not the most. And there is no evidence or basis in the public health, safety, and welfare for things such as a 500-foot setback. There just simply isn't. Your authority to govern land use without paying people for reducing or infringing on their property rights comes from your police power, which is your power to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. There's no evidence to support these proposals based in the public health, safety, and welfare. So with that, excuse me, I would echo the words of the planning staff, who has studied this in depth, and your planning commission, who recommended against this text amendment. Thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Levy? I would just, yes, Deb, go ahead.
And again, we're just speaking generally. When a project comes forward, does it normally include a decommissioning plan?
Absolutely. Every renewable energy project I've ever been involved with includes a decommissioning plan, and I think everyone includes some form of decommissioning security, financial security as well.
When the, when a project is developed, I've heard a lot of concern about access for fire rigs. Are there standards in place to make sure that that mobility is achieved?
So a solar project is laid out so that vehicles can access all throughout the facility. Like with anything, there are more major roads, and then there are roads between the panels. The roads between the panels are enough for a vehicle to get through. A solar developer typically meets with and works with the fire departments that are, have jurisdiction over the area, provides them with training, with access, with equipment, if need be, to access the facility and to make sure that that fire department has the wherewithal and the necessary equipment and materials to address any kind of a fire that might occur around or through the solar facility.
My final question has to do with the water and the erosion. We've heard that the panels are four feet, but what is the base and what water flows and, or is that taken into consideration when designing?
It is. So a solar project in Nebraska actually has probably 40-plus permitting steps. So you work with the Nebraska Department of Energy and Environment, or Environment and Energy, for example. They implement the Federal Clean Water Act. And so you, like any project, you have to deal with all of those things. The base is piles driven into the ground, so the ground remains open and receptive to runoff of any kind. In fact, perhaps more so than an agricultural field, which is in very, you know, narrow, distinct rows.
Yeah. And then we, a lot of talk today about ground cover and barriers and that, and we do have some in place. We've heard proposals to increase some of those, Mr. Levy. I mean, I guess I'd be curious your thoughts if we would increase the amount of trees from, and I'm going to get confused, four per hundred to six per hundred. I mean, is that, was, do you have any objections to making a change like that?
Again, last summer, this board adopted regulations that required four trees per hundred feet. That was based on your staff looking at regulations around the state, around the Midwest. That said, and again, this is not a permit hearing on a particular project, but Ranger Power, for example, and any developer that I've worked with, is open to talking with particular residents or landowners about screening for their particular property. It really, you know, when you talk about four trees per hundred and you see the pictures, note that that picture was an open landscape, right? When you actually go out to a site, there are already trees, there's topography, there are all kinds of things that screen visual effects. And so the four trees per hundred is a minimum requirement. Developers typically will work with people, and depending on the particular situation, that they will try and, and the distance is important as well.
Absolutely. Well, we've had a lot of discussion. In my short term on the board, we've had a lot of discussions about this, and it's always, you know, we're trying to balance the different entities that are involved in protecting the rights of landowners to use their property, protecting the rights of landowners who are going to be impacted by those decisions. And we've worked very hard in the past, and I, I know that this particular hearing is a text amendment, and then we'll very likely follow up shortly with a special permit where more specific applications are coming into play. I know you and your client are hearing these concerns, and I know that you and your client know that we're aware of them, and we have great respect for the people that are being impacted. So we're looking, and this is a hard line to hit. My old mediation mentors used to say, a good mediation means everybody leaves a little unhappy, but trying to hit that balance between going forward and doing something that's important to a lot of our citizens, providing as much protection to those who are going to be the most directly impacted. And that's where, as we go forward, we'll be...
Absolutely. And this board, and you all know this, of course, you have the right to condition projects. That's why these are special permits. That's the nature of them. Everyone is unique. You can add requirements if you see fit, again, within the bounds of the public health, safety, and welfare. But to your point, Mr. Chairman, yesterday at a presentation at the Wind and Solar Conference, I said that this balance that you try to find here is neither an art nor a science. It's just a challenge.
Just a challenge.
And I understand that. I've done this for a long time. I was a city planner at one point in my career a long time ago. It is, it is, you're trying to find a balance, and we absolutely understand that. That balance, though, in my opinion, with all respect, is best found on a project-by-project basis. That's why you have the special permit process. This is, this proposal before you today is a sledgehammer approach in response to one particular project, but it would affect every square foot of ground in this county.
Roma has a question.
And I know we asked about the specific question about the screening and so forth, and I do have another question regarding the decibel level. You know, I do live out in the country, and I hear grain dryers going and everything, and I don't know what the decibel level is or anything, but it's enough sometimes that I, it does bother me. What is, what is your best, what sort of a decibel level do the, do the solar panels do?
The solar panels themselves are almost silent. They move with the sun. So the sound from a solar project is the inverters.
It's the inverters.
And the inverters tend to be toward the interior of the project. There's not an inverter at every solar panel, so they're clustered more toward the interior of the project. The county regulations have sound requirements for the inverters, and those requirements, you know, when you adopted those regulations, I at least felt that those were fair and reasonable, and those are in place, and they're protective of neighboring landowners.
All right. Thank you for being here, Mr. Levy.
Thank you.
The last person signed up is Chelsea Johnson.
Hello.
I need to swear you in here.
Yep.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony brought to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I'm Chelsea Johnson. I live at 1709 Bedlow Court, and I am the Deputy Director of Nebraska Conservation Voters, and I also serve as a member of the Lincoln Electric System Board of Directors. However, my testimony today is not representing the Lincoln Electric System Board. I am testifying in opposition to this text amendment because the county should foster an environment that is friendly to solar energy, and this text amendment would send the opposite message. Instituting onerous regulations on the solar energy industry would run counter to the direction that the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County are moving. The City of Lincoln's Climate Action Plan, Lincoln Electric Systems' passage of a net-zero carbon by 2040 goal, and the proposed Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan have all prioritized action on climate change and support for clean energy development in our county, and rightfully so. Local development of clean energy resources is important to the achievement of the objectives in all three of these plans, and this text amendment would hinder that clean energy development. Regardless of the stated intent behind this proposed text amendment, the impact of it is harmful to local solar development. I'm encouraged by the actions that the county board have taken in recent years to support clean energy, and I hope that you will continue to do so by denying this text amendment.
Any questions for Ms. Johnson? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else to testify in opposition? Seeing none, anyone here to testify in a neutral capacity? Right. None there, and then my belief is we'll go back to the applicant, and then the staff. Steve's available if we have any questions of him before we close the hearing.
Thank you. Commissioners, David Bargan again with Rembert Ledki Law Firm, on behalf of Mick Von Bush and the other folks before you today. Just wanted to hit on a few points in rebuttal to what was discussed a little bit earlier in this hearing. Thank you again for your time. Appreciate this. You know, the clients I represent, their lives were turned upside down with one vote, and that vote was when their reasonable expectations of what their investments were in their homes and their properties and the location where they chose to build those homes was fundamentally changed. As you know, the CUP regulations used to reserve a large portion of the areas where they built their homes for agricultural purposes. They, it was that way for years. They went into those homes and those lots knowing that they bought them there for that reason, and with, in an instant with a change, with a vote, that changed. Now all of a sudden, an industrial facility, and that's what these are. I grew up on a farm. My folks are still on the family farm. This is industry. It's not farming. An industrial facility will now be a few feet from their homes. The covenants that some of these folks live under, the private covenants where they have bought their homes in these CUPs, don't allow for them to have solar panels on their properties. And yet, the county has now changed the outlaw regulations to allow them to encroach on their homes from the outside. So there's a huge disconnect here with what I think the county has done, and the suggestion was then to come forward with their own text amendment to try and resolve some of this, and that's what they've done today, and are asking for your consideration to try to hopefully correct what I think has been done in the past, to change what were their expectations for many years. The assertion here is that this would affect the entire county. Yes, it would. Yes, it would. And some assertion has been made that this can be best dealt with on a project-by-project basis. And yet, when we try to do that, then the argument is, well, now we're not being fair to all projects, or we're somehow just doing an ad hoc approach. Isn't that better? I think last year, when the county passed the regulations, I read in the newspaper that they were, a lot of folks were happy that, hey, we've come before the county with some regulations before, before a project gets here to get things in place, right? And to have something of clean slate, to have some general regulations apply to everybody. That's what this will do. This is just an amendment to the general regulations that applies to everybody that takes into consideration some common sense things, things that other states and countries have thought about, like environmental impact. If there are 40-plus permits to be gotten elsewhere, then at least the county can require that applicant to show them, you the permits. What permits do you have? Other states do that. Fire protection. Australia has a lot of these facilities, and they have onerous, not onerous, but voluminous requirements for fire protection plans, 100-plus-page plans on how will you fight a fire around a facility? We have nothing. We have the word of a project who says, we'll go talk to the local fire department after it's approved, and we'll buy you some stuff, or we'll train you how to fight a fire. Doesn't the county want some control of that on the front side before a project is considered? So I guess I don't understand the argument to say it's a sledgehammer approach, when all we're asking for is four more trees per hundred feet, right? We're asking for a fire protection plan to make sure that people are protected who live next to these facilities, whether, whether it starts a fire or whether lightning starts a fire, and now fire trucks have to get in. We heard testimony that there's enough room for a vehicle to get into a project. What vehicle? My pickup? A fire truck? Your car? We don't know that, and we can't control, you can't control that once a project's approved. So these are reasonable regulations approaches. The setback, again, 500 feet is all we're talking about, and it would apply countywide. It would. But that's 500 feet. It's not a huge amount of space. Noise. We talked about noise. I live in the country too. And it's amazing when, I've lived in town too, for 10 years in Lincoln, then we moved to the country, back to the country after I lived on the farm. It's amazing how far you can hear things travel, right? It can be, you know, a couple miles away, and you can hear it. So those things like screening and setbacks and noise requirements, and if the inverters are truly focused on the middle of the project, then the sound regulation shouldn't be a problem. If they're truly in the middle, then so what if you lower the decibels? Now we're just ensuring that noise is not a problem, and it shouldn't be hard to comply with, nor should planting four more trees be hard to comply with per hundred feet. We borrowed the language from the decommissioning plan to require that there be a surety in place for the screening too. That makes sense. Article 10, like I said before, of your regulations, has more regulations on more bases for a cell tower than for a 3,000-acre facility of glass. That by itself should give you some pause to think maybe we should rethink our overall general approach before, before we start approving the largest facility in the state. If I ran your shoes, that would make sense to me. Again, some of the issues we talked about here today, concerns raised about drainage, concerns about wildlife, those all would be dealt with by an impact statement, environmental impact statement. It was drafted intentionally to be general language. It could be, the scope could be determined as you see fit, as you choose, as the county, the organization to conduct that study. That could be as extensive as you want or not, but at least something is there to say we've looked at drainage, we've looked at wildlife, we've looked at runoff, we've looked at redirecting water, whatever the issue is, we've looked at that. I guess I want to close with this, just, we, I do lots of cases like this too. I represent lots of groups like this, and there are always, as is their right, I totally agree, as Mr. Levy said, it's everyone's right to come testify at these hearings. There are always those ones who testify about the broader global issue of climate change, environmental issues. We need to do something, we need to do our part, and that's appropriate, right? We understand that. Like, the clients I've represented in this, these are no different. To a person, generally do not, do not have a problem with renewable energy, with wind energy or solar energy, but they want to make sure that their concerns are addressed. And it always seems to come down to, there's an outside opinion that says we need to do something, let's go put it over here. Not in my backyard, let's go put it over here. Lincoln has 6,000 acres of parkland. Omaha has 10,000 acres of parkland. What if we propose these projects for Lincoln's parklands or Omaha's parklands? How many people would you think you'd have sitting out here today if you did that? You'd have to move the meeting because there'd be so much opposition to taking up your parkland. Well, my clients live in the country, and that's their parkland. That's, that's what they expected. So for people to testify and say we need to do something for the society is, well, well and good, but who pays for that? The folks who are affected by that are people like my clients, and in the legal realm, we call that condemnation. If we're doing something as the public, for a public purpose, then the public has to pay the people who have to pay, who are, are charged with that, who are bearing the cost of that. But these projects don't get that, and my clients probably can't bring an inverse condemnation action for this. We rely upon the policymakers to protect their rights. So that's what we're doing today, asking for your support on this text amendment, and that we give this, and yes, this was approved a year ago, whatever it was, but at the time, as I understand it, the proposed facilities at that time were much smaller. This has become much larger over time, and now we're seeing, as we heard, we want to have the county open for business. Well, respectfully, my clients were there first, and their businesses, they're paying taxes too. They're already doing business here in the county. It happened for many years before this new business shows up. So we ask that you consider that and take this into account, and that we put these regulations in place and take some time before we approve more of these projects. Any questions?
Mr. Bargan? Yeah, I, a lot of information today, and I know all of us are processing up here, you know, we, we listen very carefully, and it takes a while to put it all in order. I'm tempted to ask a question, but I'm not sure I have it everything lined up, but thank you for your perspective this morning, and as, as you know, I did go out and meet with several of the folks in this area. We had a lot of discussions about what their options were, and here we are today as a result of those conversations. If, I would just clarify one point, and then I think I'll quit. You're saying there were, lives were changed by one vote. You're record, you're referring to the text amendment regarding the CUP, whether there would be solar.
Correct.
That was the one vote.
Correct. Up to that point, the use of outlots in the CUPs was for agricultural purposes, and it wasn't clear, it wasn't allowed to be used for industrial purposes, and that's what that changed it.
And going back to that hearing, and that's when we heard, you know, you've got these rules on this side and then different rules over here, and we had that whole discussion at that time too. So, okay. Very good. No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Steve has waited patiently here. Is there anything we want to clarify with the planning department? Very good. We will then close this public hearing.
We need adjournment?
Second.
Did we already do the announcements? Am I correct on that?
I'm moving adjourned.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn the commissioners' meeting. Please call the roll.
Yolka?
Yes.
Larray?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries on zero.
Recycle it all.
With that, we will open the Board of Commissioner's Staff Meeting for two...